Good evening and welcome to the NIC Board of Trustees meeting. Y'all would rise and join me for the political allegiance. It looks like we have a quorum. All five trustees are present. We will go to the first item under the special business section of the agenda. Tab one is action is canvas of trustee election. Sarah Garcia, please.
Good evening, trustees chair. Well, we don't have a chair at the moment, I guess. Pardon my unpreparedness here. I forgot this in my office and had to run back and go get it. So we have the Cooney County election results for the general election that occurred on November 8th, 2022. In Zone One, candidate Terry Zimmerman received 28,353 votes. Candidate Ronald Hartman received 26,608. So candidate Zimmerman is the successful trustee. In Zone Two, candidate Sheridan received 27,220 votes. Candidate Corkill received Corkill received 27,662 votes. Mr. Corkill is the successful trustee elected in Zone Two. In Zone Five, trustee candidate Mike Wagner received 29,162 votes. And candidate Pete Brochet received 25,240 votes, making Mr. Wagner the successful elected trustee.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, under special business, we are to tab two. The action is election of officers and appointment of external liaisons for the board. We'll start in order with the board chairman, then the vice chair, and then the secretary treasurer is a combined position. So we'll elect one person for that position. Are there any nominations for board chair?
Trustee Banducci.
Trustee McKenzie.
Your past time as chair, there was definitely a lot of people in this community that supported your chairmanship through this time. And I just think it'd be wise for these people's voices and concerns and thoughts to be heard. So I just want to bring that out to know that I've at least listened to a lot of people who've supported your chairmanship through the years. And I think you've done a fabulous job as many in this community has as well.
Thank you. Appreciate those kind words. Do we have any motions for board chair?
I'll make the motion for you as board chair.
All right. We have a motion and we have a second. Are there any other motions?
May I make a motion?
Yes.
I would like to nominate Brad Corkell for chair.
All right.
He does have past experience and I think he would make a great chairperson as well.
Is there a second? I'll second that. All right, we have a motion and a second, and we have a second motion and a second. We will vote on the initial motion first, and if it passes, the second motion will be unnecessary. If it does not pass, we will move to the second motion. The first motion had a first and a second nominating Todd Banducci as chairman. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed, please say nay.
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 All right, the motion carries. The second motion will not be heard. Well, that kickstarts us off really well. I was kind of wondering how this would play out. And what sort of attitude everybody would have. That's okay. Though pasture showed us that the chair can have some liberty to speak. I'm going to take a little now. And I've thought about this for the last couple, three days if this should occur, or if I should be nominated as chair. And then how that went. You know, there's a lot of folks that profess to be the folks of kumbaya, love, diversity and tolerance. And yet I challenge you that they're the ones that have fomented anger and hate over the last number of months. I can give you names of some of the leaders of that. And whether it be in the press, the Dolans, the Patricks, all the various, the Geddys, the Armins, the barrels of ink that have been spilled, the convenient fictions that have been put out there. You know, some of you should look in the mirror and quit projecting on me and others, the things that you've been doing. You've divided the community. Calling someone extremist just because they disagree with you is not accurate. You know, Marine Dolan offered me the opportunity to write a rebuttal, but I didn't. You don't see me writing in the press. You don't see me writing in the spokesman. You don't see me on social media calling you names, attacking your family. I don't put poop on your sign at your business. I don't put swastikas at your son's business and terrible things like that. I don't lie and cheat and deceive. Use NIC logo on the chamber that shouldn't even be engaged on this in a partisan way. There's so many things that have been done that are just outrageous in this last election cycle. You know, I've got texts that say, go die. I can't even imagine sending a text like that to somebody. Is that really who you people are? Do you not denounce and reject such things, such hate? Such things that supposedly are abhorrent to you, do these things? At an event in my own building that I was disinvited to, I've been in that building for almost 23 years. I'm one of the founders of that building. I'm one of the owners. Because some of you apparently can't even be in the same room with me. Tell me about civility and your cordialness. I haven't taken, I have not dismissed anybody's hand from me. But that was the topper at a Christmas party on Friday. An employee from this very college who's been friendly with me over the years. So we've shaken hands and had good conversations. And I definitely consider him a friendly acquaintance. Our wives are there and we're there as their spouses. And I reached my hand out to visit with him as usual, and he refuses my hand. So tell me now, who's the hater? Tell me who's the one that's foaming all the anger. I've not turned away anybody's hand. I reached out to Mr. Corporal through a mutual friend multiple times before the election to try to get together. He rejected that. I talked to John Young at the ribbon cutting for the dental clinic. And I said, John, how does this look like after the election when you go no holds barred? Win or lose? How's, these things aren't easily forgotten or moved past. He says, well, we'll just have to agree to disagree. And I said, John, I didn't know there was anything to agree or disagree with. I'm just talking basic civility here. Well, I guess we'll just have to agree to disagree. I'm still not sure what we were agreeing or disagreeing about. It's not about me. It's about the position. But you guys have made it personal and you've attacked me for months. You've hurt my family, my business, my colleagues, my work, my employees, the people in the business, in the building with me. Some of you should just be ashamed. And so I'm calling you out on it tonight. And I, and I'm the chair at this moment, and quite frankly, it gives you pause for anybody to ever want to be chair or any of the officers on this board, or even to run to be a trustee. Some of you folks say you've got the higher ground. Prove it to me sometime. I haven't seen it. You certainly haven't extended any courtesies to me. And yet I, I challenge you, find something where I called you a name, or I shook away your hand, or I wrote something bad about you in the paper. You won't find it. You call me the bully. I'm not the bully. Some of you are the biggest bullies there ever was, and you're the biggest cowards to boot. And it's amazing how you put the pressure on people. You know, it's not, and the other part of it is you do all those things and then you want me to just be kumbaya with you and do what you want me to do. And and you say, I'm going to do all these things. Like you know what I'm going to do, what I'm going to think, my, what my rationale is, why I do what I do. You don't know me. You don't know me. I spent the weekend with my wife and my grandchildren. It was beautiful. I wasn't thinking about you, but I'm living in a lot of your heads, fortunately rent free. So you know what? You're not that important to me, and I shouldn't be as important as you, as apparently I am to you. And again, it's not about me. It's about the school. It's about the students. So I challenge you to, to get, get away from it being about me. You know, just because the previous boards weren't doing their jobs and wanted to rubber stamp everything. You know, that doesn't mean you assault and assassinate my character and impugn my integrity. You know, I've been in uniform for a span of over 41 and a half years. You know, and I'm a highly respected senior officer in the military academy. And I thought that was an interesting tactic. That's the thing you would attack me on. The guy that lived under an honor code at the academy and is in the inspector general's office has been a fair child. If you don't understand what the inspector general is, we're kind of the guys that hold the standards. Anyway, maybe check that book, you know, When Friends Influence People. How's that vinegar versus honey? I'm waiting to see any of the honey. So I guess we'll see how this goes from here. Everybody thinks I have this great ego. I don't. I've had more than enough salutes. So I just pulled the plug. Go check my Facebook page. Had a great Finney flight. We went down to Oregon, refilled F-15s. It was amazing day. So here's the deal. I'm the board chair right now. But I don't want to be the board chair. And I'm tired of it being about me. And I'm thankful for Aaron Bernard and the over 500 people on those pages. And I have the emails and the cards and the notes and the letters and I get, this thing's just full of kind wishes from people and letters and cards and notes. So thank you to all of you that have supported me through this. And I'm here and I'm going to do my job, but I probably ought to stop now. I've made my point. And if some of you want to choose to reflect, I think that would be wise. And if you don't, then you're just a hater. You can be vile and evil if that's what you choose, or you can hand your hand out to me the next time you see me, and I'll take it. We may not agree, but we're allowed to disagree. But quit trying to come after my family and boycott my business and make my employees, you know. You guys, some of this stuff's just, just pure nasty. And I, I would hope the people of Cooney County would reject that sort of politics. That's not who we are in North Idaho. I was raised here. I was raised in Apple, 100, population 190. I was raised, you shake a man's hand, you look me in the eye, that's your word. I was in the Lakeland district through eighth grade, graduated from Corleone High, met my wife at Lakes Middle School. I'm a hometown boy. You should be welcoming me. I've come back after serving my country, raised my family here. Very sad. So I rescind, I rescind the vote of me as chair. And I, I will nominate the next most senior member of this board as the new chairman, trustee Greg McKenzie. Do I have a second for that motion?
You have a second.
I have a second for that motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries.
Look at this agenda. And this, I left my pen.
Thank you.
Do we have the sheet for public comment? What's up? Do we have the sheet for public comment?
I think. I never saw the sheet for public comment.
Do we have anyone who's interested in spending, saying a public comment? Alright, the sheet's coming.
Have you signed up?
Did you sign up? Okay. Thank you. All right. Teresa Bornpole. Welcome. Speaking to the accreditation resolution.
Correct. Hello, my name is Dr. Teresa Bornpole. I'm a resident of Post Falls and I'm speaking on the new business item, Trustees' Path to Saving Accreditation. I'm intrigued by this agenda item because I feel like the community has been receiving mixed messages. In a local podcast that boasts 38,000 downloads per month, Todd Banducci recently stated, quote, "We got this little letter of warning. That's all the accreditation folks could justify." In an open letter that was personally delivered to 15,000 household by KCRCC volunteers, Greg McKenzie penned, "What about accreditation? It isn't at risk. No, that was fake news." Finally, in a campaign stopped by the KCRCC endorsed slate of candidates, the NIC boards that was endorsed by the KCRCC, it was stated, quote, "Concerns over accreditation are overblown, but tonight, it's an agenda item, Trustees' Path to Saving Accreditation, because yes, it does in fact need to be saved." So tonight, when this agenda item is discussed, I hope that the three of you can include one or perhaps two items. Number one, perhaps we could be provided with how the epiphany was reached by accreditation discounters, that in fact accreditation is an important thing, so much so that a plan to fix it has reached the agenda, something that could have been done under Todd Banducci's chairmanship in 2021. Or two, an apology to the residents of North Idaho and the taxpayers of Cooney County for the weaponization and misinformation and outright lies during the recent campaign cycle. A college without accreditation is a college in which students cannot transfer their credits, they can't receive financial aid, and we can't recruit professional talent. Anyone who knows anything about colleges knows accreditation is the foundation of a college's success. I'm grateful that there's a glimmer of hope, albeit late. And just because I was challenged, Todd Banducci, you called me evil at the last board meeting. Thank you so much. I look forward to the epiphany or the apology, or perhaps both.
Thank you. Michael McGowan, McGowan? And Randy Neal, you're on deck.
So we have two minutes, is it?
Yes.
And introductory remarks are included?
Yes.
Okay. So my name is Michael McGowan. I live in Post Falls. I've been a teacher for 22 years myself, so I think I understand something about the importance of education. This has to be pretty quick because there's a lot here. Clearly, we're divided in this community about a lot of things. So Ms. Bornpole just said something to the effect of supporting the leftward leaning people, I suppose. Now I'm going to do the other side. I have information concerning the item on the agenda which concerns assigning various positions to the trustees. We have a serious problem in that regard. Two of the trustees, in my considered opinion, are not actually trustees. I'm sorry to say it. The false advertising campaign carried on by two connected groups, connected groups, the groups being North Idaho Republicans and Friends of NIC. I don't have time to get into details. You're mostly probably familiar with them. Let's just sum up by stating the core of the issue. NIR and phonique, North Idaho Republicans and Friends of NIC, blatantly and clearly tried to impersonate the KCRCC in order to deceive enough people into changing their votes from the KCRCC recommends to their own recommends. So false advertising is already a crime. It's far worse in the case of political advertising because the lies told strike at the very foundation of our nation, which is the popular vote. The voters have a strict right to receive accurate information. Anyone therefore who lies to the voters in a political ad is also committing the crime of treason. Moreover, I have some evidence that this campaign was in fact successful on their part. I helped the KCRCC committee man walk his precinct on the Saturday before the election. Out of the many houses I visited, I actually spoke to 15 people face to face. Of these 15, I counted them by the way, of these 15, four showed some confusion as to who the KCRCC was recommending. In all four cases, these people intended to vote the KCRCC line because they knew what the KCRCC stands for.
10 more seconds.
And trusted its judgment. I'm not going to finish here. I just want to say then to end this that the three duly and truly elected trustees get on the same page, lock arms, and do the job that we elected you to do. I and others don't even consider Mr. Corkill or Ms. Zimmerman to be actually elected. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. And if I may encourage you to email the board your full statement. I would appreciate that. Thank you. You were heard. Okay. Randy Neal, thank you. And Howard Coons is on deck.
First, I'd like to say that I love seeing representative government restored to NIC despite nefarious plan that was hatched a long time ago. It seems like they created the problem and then became the solution. A former trustee and four of her sister nonprofits is what brought this colleges accreditation brought under review. And then a, which was a continual plan to subvert the will of the people. And then while the will of the peoples was subverted, they awarded this trustee emeritus status, which is falsely awarded. It should have never been awarded. I'm an alumni of NIC. And I don't like all the lying and deception, which includes trying to copy the sample ballot to get candidates awarded. You know, I've, I've said many times, you know, I'm a man that cares about my community and this college. My son has attended here. My sister's attended here. I've attended here and moved on to bigger and better things. I mean, with all of this that's gone on, the thing that we haven't been able to focus on because of all these problems and not being able to accept the will of the people is being focusing on the students of this college.
10 more seconds.
One of the things that I would like to see happen at this college is better student advising. That was one of the things that I thought was very lacking when I went through NIC. But instead we're instead of focusing on important issues like that, that's would better our community students, we have to deal with lies and deception. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tim Plasse is on deck. This is Howard Coons. Welcome.
The Cooney County Task Force on Human Relations headed by Christie Wood supports and promotes a document called the International Declaration of Human Rights. It says that everyone has a right to food, clothing, housing, education, a job with paid holidays and vacation and so on. If I've wanted food, I've always bought it. If I wanted clothing, I bought it. I bought my house. I have a college education because I worked and saved my money every summer through high school and college. According to the standard of Christie Wood and her task force, I've been deprived of my human rights my whole life. In fact, most everyone in this country has been denied their human rights. The pilgrims, the pioneers, the miners, the lumbermen, the factory workers, none of them knew they had a right to stuff without working for it. Our Declaration of Independence has a very different and limited view of human rights. It says that the purpose of government is to secure the rights that have been given to us by God. I have a right to life because God gave me life. I have a right to be a man because God gave me the biological body of a man. I do not have the right to be a woman regardless of what I want or feel. Even the rights we have involve personal effort and responsibility. I have the right to pursue happiness, but I have not been given happiness. I have the right to bear arms, but I have not been given weaponry. The Task Force on Human Rights advocates for rights that are not given by God. They are the empty promises of socialism and communism. For many years, Christie Wood advanced the woke philosophy of entitlement at NIC. When she was no longer in the majority, she used her influence with the task force, the media and the legal system to maneuver three like-minded temporary appointees onto this board, who then flattered her with the title of trustee emeritus. Because that was a blatant act of political incest, I asked this board to remove Christie Woods from that undeserved status.
Thank you. Welcome, Tim Plasse.
Yeah, Tim Plasse from Rastram area. And I just wanted to say that I've been interested in all the things going on with the board over the last year and looking forward to the new trustees that elected to working together, especially conservatives that should be able to work with conservatives. That's a basic expectation, I think. I downloaded and read the minutes, or not the minutes, the agenda for this meeting. And I saw that there's a financial audit that has taken place, but I didn't see thought it. I expected I would have seen it on the attached to the to the agenda. So I would, I would request that it you get it attached or you put it to the meeting minutes, we as a public should be able to see what's going on. It shouldn't be hidden from us. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. Just real quick, sir. We had the exit interview today for the audit. I had the opportunity to be there. We had that from about 10:30 to 11 today. Yes.
Is, is available on the NIC website. Last year's audit is currently available on the website. And as soon as the current, tonight's audit is accepted, we will get a PDF posted to the NIC website of this most recent audit. It is always available to the public.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, thank you.
And to be honest, the actions of the chair caught me by surprise. So we're going to step back to the previous item and we're going to elect the vice chair. We are soliciting nominations for vice chair for the board.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee.
I nominate Mike Wagner for vice chair.
Do we have a second? I'll take the liberty to second that then. Do we have any other nominations for vice chair? Quiet on that end. Okay, seeing no other nominations, we shall take the vote. Everyone in the affirmative of nominating Mike Trustee Wagner as vice chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's three ayes. And that leaves that leaves the secretary treasurer position.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Banducci.
I'd like to nominate Brad Corkell for secretary treasurer.
I second the nomination.
That's great. We're looking towards consensus. Is there any other nominations? Here's your chance. Okay, we shall take the vote for Brad Corkell as secretary treasurer. Everyone in the affirmative, say aye.
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 That was three ayes, I believe.
Five.
That was about four, four ayes and the vote does not vote. Okay. And that leaves, we need some liaisons to the I believe there's the Boosters Club that comes to mind, K-Tech representative and NIC Foundation representative. Trustee Banducci.
I'd like to nominate the chair yourself as the liaison to the North Idaho College Foundation.
I did enjoy my time there. Is there any seconds or second nominations?
Second it.
Second. No other nominations. Here's your chance. We can have a conversation about this if either of you think differently. Anyone? Okay, we shall take the vote for Okay, we shall take the vote for NIC Foundation rep. Everyone in the affirmative of Chair McKenzie being the NIC Foundation rep, say aye.
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 Excellent. That leaves the, we shall move on to K-Tech. We can say names. Is there any bone willing to vote names? Okay. Thank you. We shall move on to the K-Tech representative. Do we have any nominations for the K-Tech representative? Trustee Banducci.
At one point in time in conversations. With Mister Wagner's corporate background, I know. He and I had talked about my time as a liaison to K-Tech and how much I enjoyed that. I think I was there for five years. And I suspect he would enjoy doing that. If he's willing and able, I would like to nominate Mike Wagner as a K-Tech liaison. I think I think he'd enjoy and do a great job.
Do we have any other nominations or a second?
I'll second that.
Excellent. Hearing no further nominations, we shall take the vote for trustee Wagner to be K-Tech representative. Everyone in the affirmative, say aye.
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 That would be four ayes. And let's see, that leaves the booster. Congratulations to both of. Well, the two of us so far. Extra responsibilities, but extra fun. Alright, that leaves the booster club representative.
I'd like to nominate. Trustee Vanducci for the booster club.
He would be a great choice. Is there any other nominations for the booster club? I'll second your nomination to the booster club.
I have an affinity for athletics. I would enjoy that.
Opening discussion and is there, we shall take the vote for the booster club. Everyone in the affirmative, say aye.
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 That's four ayes, excellent. And. Any other, feel free to think outside of the box if we want to have any more. Last chance. Okay, moving on to the agenda. Celebrating success, the new location for NIC at Sandpoint. It's quite a big deal and that is Christine Collison, is she here? To Zoom, welcome.
Good evening.
Come, we hear you great. Yes, hoping to maybe get her on the big screen if that's possible, but go ahead.
Alright, good evening, Mister Chair, members of the board, President Swain, NIC colleagues and guests. I am Christine Callison, Regional Outreach Coordinator for North Idaho College. I have been a part of the NIC family for more than sixteen years. In that time, there have been many changes. And challenges. But we're not here to talk about that. Tonight we celebrate success. I am pleased to share some good news about our Sandpoint campus and the work we are doing in the northern counties. NIC has served the Bonner County area with outreach services for more than two decades. In two thousand and twelve, the NIC Center was moved from Ponderay to downtown Sandpoint. The new campus was centrally located and easily accessed. With community support, NIC was able to add a science lab. Diversify local course offerings and expand support services. However, over time, the layout at the downtown facility proved to be problematic. NIC offices and classrooms were spread out between two adjacent buildings. The Sandpoint Event Center and the Pine Street Annex. Other tenants were situated in between and around us in both buildings on every floor. A doctor's office, a hair salon, a financial planner. It was very confusing for visitors and people would often wander around in search of our administrative office. Students would come and go without interacting with each other and often without realizing the full scope of local services we offered. Security was a concern and maintenance was a challenge. Approximately one year ago, we became aware of an opportunity to lease an additional suite in the Pine Street Annex. We began discussing ways to potentially reconfigure our campus. And consolidate our Sandpoint operations into one building. We brainstormed, we measured, we reflected on ways that we could improve our services and create a more cohesive campus environment. For our students and visitors. I'm very grateful for the assistance we received as we gradually developed an action plan. I'm pleased to report that last summer, with the support of NIC leadership, an agreement was negotiated and a new lease was signed. In June, we vacated the event center building and moved everything into the Pine Street Annex. This is the Pine Street Annex. The building is smaller and our square footage is. Are you seeing my slideshow by the way? It just occurred to me. Did I share my screen with you?
We're refilling the stone.
Hold on. There.
No, not.
No.
Almost.
When we see you.
Standby. We have two of you though at the top.
Uh oh. Hold on. I think my host has disabled my screen sharing.
Sure, we're on it. Standby.
I do have some great pictures to show you when we're ready.
We want to see them.
While while we have this pause, do you have a a meeting room to host a board meetings in San?
Hmm, no. Not easily. Not a large group meeting. But a small group meeting certainly.
Well, hopefully.
It's a really nice facility. It it looks great. It represents Idaho College very well. Well organized. And and they've done a great job remodeling it, so hopefully we can see the pictures.
I'll leave it up to Steve.
We'll give it a couple more minutes. We'll keep keep trying. It's worth it.
Maybe, maybe not.
Shall we?
I can proceed without it.
As as let's let's proceed.
We can we can share the pictures out if she can't. Share the pictures out later.
Well, in any case, we moved into the Pine Street Annex, the one, the smaller building of the two bait buildings located on this campus. So our square footage has been reduced, but the space is more strategically used. We now occupy all but one suite in the Pine Street Annex. We currently have two Zoom equipped classrooms and we will soon be adding a third. We have a computer lab, a science lab, a health professions lab. We also have a dedicated classroom for adult education. Faculty offices, a math education center and an administrative office with a testing lab. This is where I would show you some pictures of those spaces, but perhaps you'll just have to come up and visit. What a difference this move has made. When we welcomed students back to school this fall, we immediately noticed several things. First, students were using the computer lab more than ever before. I would estimate that usage has increased at least a hundred percent, if not more. In the past, many students didn't know the computer lab existed. Now it is the first thing they see when they cross the parking lot and enter our building. Also, students are gathering in our common areas. In the past, we were not allowed to place furniture in the hallways. Now, people can use benches downstairs or tables upstairs to socialize, study and eat. Students stop by our office, they visit with the staff, they engage with their instructors, they meet up with their classmates. All of these things. Point to an increase in student interaction, which is precisely what we were hoping to see. In September, we hosted a day of welcome for students and community members. The event was well attended, President Swain and several others from Cordeleyne Campus were able to join us. We had good food and great prizes. It was a day of celebration. And this is where I would show you some pictures of our students. But again, you'll just have to come up and meet them. We love to see those smiling faces. Of our students. You know, our Sandpoint campus serves a very mixed population. Students come to us from far and wide and then northern counties. Clark Fork, Priest River, Bonners Ferry, Moye Springs. This semester, we even have a student who travels from Creston, B.C. to attend class here. When she schedules her exams, we have to make sure that she can finish and get back to the Port Hill border crossing before it closes at five P.M. Speaking of exams, we administer hundreds of tests here every semester. These include exams for NIC classes. Math placement, GED testing. We also proctor specialized tests for nursing workforce training programs. Students consistently express appreciation for this service, which saves them time and travel and reduces stress. Most of our students are non-traditional and many are first generation as well. Consequently, the support that we offer is critical to their success. Community members can receive onsite assistance with admissions. And access to important services such as academic advising. They can enroll in local classes for college credit. Participate in adult education and workforce training programs. They can receive tutoring and coaching at the Math Education Center. The list goes on. We are a small campus, but the impact of our work, in my opinion, is very significant. Over the years, I have been privileged to witness some remarkable transformations. I have seen students overcome impossible odds and achieve great things. So many stories I could share. I know we don't have time for all of that tonight, but I do want to tell you about one student in particular. Her name is Barbara. She came into the Sandpoint office one day a few years ago and told me that she had been a traffic flagger for most of her adult life. Now Barbara wanted to go to college, but she didn't know how to get started. So. We helped her and before long she was taking classes in Sandpoint and later progressed to classes in Cordeleyne. I am pleased to share that Barbara completed her associate's degree last December and she walked at commencement last spring. Barbara stopped by our office recently to say hello. While we visited, I asked if her family had been able to attend the graduation ceremony. Oh yes, she said. Had to ask for extra tickets so everyone could be there. She then proceeded to tell me how the commencement speakers shared information about the class. The total number of graduates, the age of the youngest, the age of the oldest. Sixty feet. Barbara looked at me with a shy smile and said. That was me. This is where I would show you a picture of her. But again, you'll have to come up and meet her. We never know who's gonna walk through the door of our office on any given day. They come from all backgrounds, they face many barriers, but they all desire the same thing. Access to education. We are proud to offer that access in Sandpoint and in doing so, we are honored. To represent North Idaho College. We appreciate the opportunity to share some of our good news with you this evening. And we do hope sincerely that you will come and visit us at the Pine Street Annex.
Excellent, thank you.
Let's say the you mentioned the science lab, but when you see it, it is phenomenal and what's more. The the woman that teaches science there is absolutely passionate about it. Teaches biology and chemistry and is just a phenomenal addition. Wonderful, wonderful place.
Alright, fellow trustees, any. Topics of conversation and response or should we move to the next agenda item? Excellent, thank you. Thank you for zooming into us. constituent reports, ASNIC, Damian Maxwell. For those new to our communities, associated students of North Idaho College. This is the president.
Not quite that tall, but. Good evening, board. So ASNIC is just wrapping up for the semester. So recently we've had the NIC Open House, which I saw a lot of you there, wonderful event. We have filled out a foundation application. One of the biggest things on our spring survey was more outdoor seating and so. We've filled out an application for funding for that, so hopefully we can get going on that. We had a couple of members of our ASNIC team go to the ACUI Region Four Conference in Eugene to learn about leadership. Sound like it was a very, very rewarding experience for them. See. Just a few events that we have with the student events board. We have the St. Asnick coming up. We had the November twenty first World Hello Day here in the sub. We had the October twenty six Triple Play Event. And the Nicktoberfest October twentieth and today and tomorrow we have the NIC Destress Fest and. We had our ASNIC Board Meeting last month as well. That was pretty great. We read off a human rights statement that we drafted up. And we got to hear some feedback from some of the students, which we were taking into consideration and doing a second draft of. Any questions? Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Ben Tashida.
Chair McKenzie, it is Tashida. Tashida is in Idaho.
Thank you, I'll work on that.
Thank you. Board, on behalf of the faculty, I would like to welcome our new members, Mister Corkle, Mister Wagner, Mrs. Zimmerman, welcome to NIC. I'd also like to take a quick moment to recognize our outgoing members. Mister Boucher, Mister Getty and Mister Walt, thank you for your contribution. Faculty Assembly met before Thanksgiving. We had a short list of of items that took up our whole meeting. We did have a second reading of our bylaws proposal, an electronic vote followed and that did fail. We also had Doctor, Doctor Swain, President Swain as a guest to discuss faculty evaluation. We have a couple of faculty members working with the administration as a result of that conversation on that faculty evaluation procedure. I also wanted to take a quick moment to point out, one of our fellow faculty members, Joe Jacoby. Received an outstanding award from the governor's office in fine arts, so special props for him on that. And that concludes my report.
Fellow trustees, I have one, but fellow trustees, any. Inquires? You talk about the faculty evaluation procedure. I notice in our policies that it's every three years.
That's what we're addressing.
And that's what you're addressing. Okay, then. Looking forward to your inputs and hearing that. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Alright, Staff Assembly carries. Simonette?
Simone.
Simone.
Thank you trustees, welcome new board members. Staff Assembly met on November tenth. Our meeting began with a quick overview from President Swain. He restated his commitment to moving forward in a positive manner and encouraged staff to do the same. He mentioned the consultant group hired to assist with forward plans for the headland building and their feedback. Mainly in how impressed they were with the dedication of staff and faculty towards the students of NIC. Particularly the staff in the adult education program. Who work diligently to ensure those students have what they need to succeed in gaining their GED. Doctor Swain encouraged staff to continue looking at different means for recruiting and retaining students and increasing our enrollment numbers. Doctor Swain also addressed the accreditation timeline for submitting the paperwork to the NWCCU. His final message was to once again reaffirm his commitment to making sure all staff and students. From the Workforce Training Center to Parker Tech, to other departments on the Cordeleyne Campus and beyond. Feel like a true student of NIC and the pride that comes with that. We then moved on to new employee introductions of which there were several. We announced the Sterling Silver winner for November, Philippe Vale, who is our Associate Professor and Program Coordinator in the Graphic Design Program. So congratulations, Philippe. We had several shout outs as always. Again, I will never get tired of hearing our staff recognize and celebrate one another for the amazing work we do. Our guest speakers for November were Sean Collins, who spoke about the Trio Program. And how staff can identify and refer students who may need assistance in addressing outside barriers to the Trio Program for Assistance. And Julie Bailey, who explored and informed us of the professional development funds available to staff. and Julie Bailey, who explored and informed us of the professional development funds available to staff. Neil Doyle provided his Senate report. And while Ken Thompson was unable to log in for the PAC report due to the outage of the MyNIC services directly prior to the meeting, we shared that email out to staff in email form. For our forum, we had Gail Laffieri speak about the National Career Day that was held on November sixteen. And Louisa Rogers thanked staff members for attending the C T E. event at Parker Tech on the twenty eighth. Chris Miles spoke about the gathering of the bands on November ninth and tenth and shared the upcoming dates of December first for the Night of Chamber Music and December tenth and eleventh for the Sounds of Christmas Concert. So everybody needs to go out and attend those. The Corner Gallery also opened the day before that meeting. So check out those events if you can. This report was written for our November thirtieth meeting, so just keep that in mind as I'm reading out these dates. So Robin Reese, with the Student Services Office, also reminded us of the Blanket Drive. Their office is hosting and that the Center for New Directions is doing a drive for Codes for Kids. We convened shortly after. Any, any questions?
Fellow trustees, I have one. Would you list the night at Christmas concert? What day is that?
It's December tenth and eleventh for the Sounds of Christmas.
Same show two nights?
Yes, I believe so.
Awesome. Thank you. And that leaves the Senate. Neil Doyle, welcome.
Thank you, Chair McKinsey, trustees, President Swain, guests. The N I C. Senate last met on November seventeenth, where we were joined by Karen Hubbard for a first read on Policy three point zero two point two three point zero one. We approved the first read with some very minor changes recommended. That's it for our Senate meeting. Any questions?
Any questions?
Short but sweet.
Short but sweet.
I always talk the least up here, so thank you.
Dr. Swain, are you ready?
I am ready.
You are recognized.
All right, so as in keeping with tradition of, and my advisor, Bill Young, I'm going to start with the mission statement, that North Idaho College meets the diverse educational needs of students, employers and the North Idaho community it serves through a commitment to student success, educational excellence, community engagement and lifelong learning. And he also recommended we start with a goal and our goal is to, and you've heard this from, from folks tonight. Our goal is to increase enrollment and student support, get to five thousand for the fall of twenty twenty-three and grow towards six thousand by the fall of twenty twenty-five. Okay, so first, first item then was to, I just want to say welcome to all three new board members. And we, I look forward to working with you over the next two years or, or four years. And then I'm going to move on. We haven't recognized her yet, but I want to recognize Sarah Garcia as our new Vice President for Finance and Business. And she was. We, we did a national search. Ken Wardinsky ran the search. We had three outstanding candidates. And Ms. Garcia was, was selected as the, as the final, so she is no longer interim, she is the actual. And we are in the final stages of the search for our Chief Academic Officer and Vice President for Student Services. There are three candidates on campus this week. One started today and they'll be here throughout the week. And we hope to have that search completed by mid-December and I'll say thanks to Steve Kurtz and the entire search team for their work that's ongoing. You heard earlier, Joe Jacoby, the Director of North Idaho's Theater Program, received the, an award called the Support for Arts Education Award during the Governor's Award in the Arts Ceremony on November twenty-eighth at the Idaho Museum in Boise. So that's a very prominent thing and I, every time our faculty and, and staff and students are recognized at the state or national level, it's a, it's a really good thing for the, for the college. So hats off to Joe Jacoby for his great work. And then moving on, N I C. Athletics has been on a really strong role this semester. The volleyball team finished fourth in the conference. I know they wanted to get first, but they did an outstanding job. Those young ladies played their hearts out. And I just say, thanks for their commitment and to Coach Kelsey Stanley for her leadership with that team. They did a great job representing North Idaho College. Our men's basketball team was just in Northern California at, for the Northern California Golden State Classic tournament in the San Francisco area. Those are tough teams with community colleges from big cities. And they extended their record to seven and oh against a really tough schedule. So they're, they've, they, and I don't want to jinx them, but they've been doing really good this year. And great, great leadership from the, both the team and the coach Corey Simmons. So thank you to all of them. And our wrestlers posted strong individual performances. It was a individual tournament called the Battle of the Rock, for the Rockies Open at the University of Providence. And we're working really hard to rebuild that program. We've got two great coaches, Derek Booth and Cooper Thomas, doing a fantastic job with that. And I checked with them last week. The Tri-State is back on again, kind of after a couple of years in, in hiatus or in, in sort of a degraded mode because of COVID. That's back on live and we have, I think, fifty-nine teams that are planning on showing up, which is just going to be a tremendous program for North Idaho College. It'll be December sixteenth through the eighteenth. So look forward to that. It's, it should be great. In terms of academics, this is, this is the final week of class for the fall semester. For students, that means finals are next week. We've got a bunch of activities on campus, night at the library where they go and get support and, and you know, finalizing, finalizing their studies and tutoring. So all that's on. I will note that this December graduation is our, is going to be our first for the dental hygiene program. And I think we have a hundred percent that of the students that started are going to finish and graduate. So that's something that we can really. And, and as has been mentioned already, but I'll just remind everyone, the Sounds of Christmas performance will be going on. It's a choral and orchestra combination, seven thirty to nine on Saturday and two to three thirty on Sunday in the Schuler Auditorium. So that's, I, I look forward to seeing you all there. It'll be a, a great event. So thank you all very much. And that concludes my report.
Excellent. Thank you. Fellow trustees, any inquiries, response, moving on? I've actually had time to write some things down, not necessarily in response to President Swain. Thank you for that report. But going back to the election of officers, I would just, as, take, take the liberty to say some things. To Chair Banducci, I'd say your chairmanship has never been about you. These past years has demonstrated the lack of acceptance of opposing, opposing viewpoints demonstrated from the highest levels of other trustees and even some members of N I C. community by the nastiest nastiness thrown your way. I applaud you for always focusing on the students during your entire time as a trustee and especially as a chair. I've worked directly with you and I've only witnessed you making the best decisions in the interest of the students. Trustee Corkel, you do have a significant experience, as Trustees Zimmerman pointed out. And the voters chose you and I look forward to relying on your experience as I manage this meeting as board chair.
Thank you.
So I noticed. I hope you're. I hope all of us as trustees during our tenure is about the students and the needs of this community. And especially the entire N I C. workforce feels the same way during their time working here. This board is here to serve the community and the students who need our help. I think that needs to be said and emphasized and I appreciate the president, starting with his mission statement during your reports. I think that's a focusing on the mission and why this college is here is why us unpaid trustees are here. I have befriended N I C. employees through the years and I was now, now starting, I, well, November twenty twenty is when I was elected. And I can honestly say to those, the community, that the, N I C. community, those in the community, they love this college and love the people who work here. I've made friends with them and many of people have graduated here, as we heard even in public comment. And what I can say back to the community is many of the N I C. employees are, love this community back. I just met some retired professors who literally spent most every weekend just volunteering and meeting with students and helping them learn how to think on top of getting through their courses. So the type of employees and faculty and the people associated with N I C. There's a reason that I want to send my own kids here. And I'm glad that Sandpoint, going back to the meeting agenda, has, I'm sure Sandpoint will, the whole community up there will recognize the benefit of having an improved N I C. building in their presence. And I'm pleased the, the student interaction has increased and it sounds a great improvement for the students up there. And I just want to say also that this N I C. serves all five counties. And I do have a heart for the other counties that don't have a presence that Sandpoint has. So if anyone has ideas, I'm all ears to reach those people because the drive to N I C.'s campus and even to Sandpoint is a barrier. And we're trying to get everyone in the, in these five counties to succeed. Back to the agenda. Let's go to the consent agenda. Is there any objections to the consent agenda? Hearing none. We do vote, right? Nope. All right, it's passed.
If it's without objections.
Without objections, it is passed. Unfinished business, there is none. Moving to tab three. Am I right-handed? So here she is making her way to the board. Excellent.
Chair McKinsey, trustees, fellow administrators and guests. This evening, I am pleased to share the podium with Barry Weber. He is the Senior Audit Manager with Ida Bailey, our accounting firm. I, I do want to mention that in, in twenty fifteen, we went, we put our audit services out for bid. And Ida Bailey secured the bid in twenty fifteen. Five years later, we went out for bid a second time. And again, Ida Bailey was the successful firm for that, that second round. So they, that was in twenty twenty, so they're about halfway through their five-year contract. They, the contract will be up for rebid in spring of twenty-five. So I, I'm just going to leave it to Barry. I will, I will apologize. Normally we provide draft copies to the board members during this presentation. And we didn't do that tonight, but we will get you, once you, if you agree to accept the work done by the audit firm, at the end of the presentation, we will be sure to get you original copies, PDF copies or hardbound, whichever you prefer ASAP. Barry.
Thanks, Sarah. And we did have an earlier meeting with Trustee Banducci where we went over these in detail. I think there are just a couple of minor changes that Sarah was going to make on those, so we'll get you guys the updated version tomorrow. Again, my name's Barry Weber. I'm with Ida Bailey. I've been there about twelve years and I've been working on the N I C. audit of seven since we started here in twenty fifteen. So very familiar with the financials. Really enjoy working with Sarah's team. I'll keep this pretty high level. Within these financials, we issue three reports. The first report is on the accuracy of the financials themselves. We issued what's called a clean report and an unmodified report. And so it says these financials are accurate based on our audit. As part of that audit, we had no adjustments that we had to make. So what that kind of tells you is that during the year, every, the financial numbers you've been looking at have been accurate. So there were no adjustments. We go through, do all our audit. A lot of my clients, we have minor adjustments we make here and there, but we had zero as a result of this audit. The second report that we issue is on the internal control structure. We do kind of analysis of the design of the controls of the college. So is there the appropriate approvals in place, reviews in place over all the different financial statement aspects? So based on that test, we came up again with a clean report. So a couple of different findings we've had here and there in the past would be a deficiency, which isn't, you know, hugely significant, but it's something we bring to your attention as something needs to be improved. Or if it were really, really significant and we had large adjustments, it would be a material weakness. And that's kind of where we say, hey, the numbers you've been looking at could be materially wrong from what we're putting in this audit. We had no, no findings there, no control deficiencies. The final report that we issue is related to federal awards. And so we do an audit of the federal awards, the schedule of federal awards. It's at the very end of the financials. There's about twenty million this year that was spent that came from federal funds. Again, our report was clean in regards to that. For that, what we do is we choose the large programs, which in this case would be the ARPA funds, the, the COVID relief funds. And we do an audit over that to make sure they were spent according to the requirements. And again, that all the internal control structures there, review approval, those kind of things of those funds. So clean audit there too, which we certainly appreciate and Sarah's team does a fantastic job. I'll just, as far as the financials themselves, very, very similar to prior years. Really, the only change is a new lease guidance that came into effect that requires if we enter into a lease that we actually put that as debt on the financial statements with a corresponding asset. So the college actually has relatively few leases. They told about four hundred thousand of future payments. So what you'll see on here is an asset for about four hundred thousand dollars called a right-of-use asset and a lease liability for four hundred thousand dollars. It's just a change in the guidance. There's a footnote in here that describes the change that went into effect this year. You'll, you'll actually start seeing it in the for-profit world starting next year. So that's just something I wanted to note, real, no real impact overall, other than assets are four hundred thousand dollars higher, liabilities are four hundred thousand dollars higher. Just from a thirty thousand foot level, financials are very, very, very strong. The equity position extraordinarily strong. We're looking over a hundred million of what we call net position, really equity balance is how you would compare it to the for-profit world. So very, very strong financial statements. If you were to look at something like working capital, again, that's a common for-profit term. Very, very strong, our ability to pay bills in the upcoming year. So from a financial statement aspect, as part of the audit, we go through and we assess the financial stability, financial strength that is, remains very, very strong. It has been since I started auditing these statements and it continues to be very strong. Any questions in words? Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Banducci, you're recognized.
Barry, one of the things that we talked about, and we went through this pretty well. If I understood it correctly, we have about forty point four million in cash, if you will, cash equivalents, various other things, but money. We have obligations of about six point seven million. Sound about right?
Current obligations, correct. Bills in the upcoming year.
Looking at about thirty-four million dollars.
Yeah, and that would be the working capital effectively. So that's, measures our ability to pay our bills in the upcoming year. So you know, that ratio, you know, we're looking about six times. If you go to the for-profit world, they're going to be looking for that working capital to be two to one, maybe three to one. So very, very strong position, ability to pay those bills in the upcoming year. Exactly. The one other thing I'll point out particularly for the new trustees, these statements do include the financials of the Dormitory Housing Commission, the D H C. It's considered a component unit, so it is actually blended within these financial statements. The foundation is presented separately within these statements. It has a separate auditor. We, we simply present their numbers. The Booster Club is considered completely separate. And that's just accounting guidance that requires certain things to be blended within these financials. So you will see the revenue bonds for the housing that, that do appear on here. So just want to point that out.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Banducci.
Barry, one more thing I think that might be worth noting. There has been a couple of changes in the accounting, one for this year and in the part we call one for next year about how we're accounting for both sick leave and for vacation time, and some of the way we have to count for those potential liabilities.
Yeah, that's a great point. So these do include, there's a few different things actually in here related to Percy pensions, sick leave, as well as other health benefits, post-employment health benefits that those funding levels kind of dictate how much we have to pay in moving forward. Or in the past couple of years, Percy sick leave actually, we haven't had to pay in because they've actually been overfunded. So you are going to see the impact of that. I tend to encourage boards to kind of discount those numbers because we're certainly not going to pay our future pensions. because we're certainly not gonna pay our future pensions now. Uh, we're just gonna continue paying the pension payments we have going. The big, the big change, and, and thank you for the reminder, is next year, um, goes into effect new guidance on service contracts. So similar to the, the idea of the lease, which is, you know, a legal commitment to make those future payments. The same idea would apply to a service contract if we have a legal commitment to make those payments moving forward. Uh, the big one being cloud computing, those kinds of things. Uh, that's similar idea to the leases, it will actually end up coming up on our balance sheet. Uh, so they like to throw, continue to throw changes at us. So those will continue to, um, change some of these, so it's just something to keep in mind. I tend to kind of say maybe discount those, focus on the numbers that, you know, the for-profit world looks at, most of us are familiar with. And certainly the budgeted numbers would focus on, on those other numbers as well as to kind of tough to budget for those accounting guidance stuff that we have to include in there.
All right, no more, trustee Banducci.
I will just touch, uh, I, I like to do this each year. I work with about a dozen educational institutions. Uh, this is continuously one of the best teams that I've ever worked with. Uh, Sarah and her team are incredibly generous with their time. Uh, you know, audits are hard and they have to do their day job while answering all my emails and all of my questions. And, um, we really appreciate all their time, their, their numbers are always clean, they're always prepared. So I continue to appreciate all their efforts when it comes to the audit.
Thank you. As before we go to the vote to accept this NIC financial audit, I, I would just like to say that, before I would vote to accept it, I think I would just like to meet and do the same review as, uh, trustee Banducci. Personally, myself, let's see how other board members feel. But, and I, uh, could see that happening rapidly as part of the, uh, maybe later on, new trustee onboarding process. I think in the near future, hopefully, we're gonna have a discussion where people are gonna be meeting and doing onboarding process for trustees and maybe, uh, it can be done then, sooner than later. Sarah Garcia.
Thank you, um, Chair McKenzie. Depending on the timing of that, we do have some, um, obligations to the state and some bonding agencies to get them our financial statements within six months of the end of the fiscal year, which would be the end of December. So, um, I just want to put that note out there. If we do not do that, we will be non-compliant with some of the regulations.
Good to know.
Chairman McKenzie.
Trustee Wagner.
I would like to, uh, also reinforce your comment. There are three of us who are new trustees. And before I, we approve it, I think we need an opportunity in an expeditious manner to review those documents.
I do believe we would be able to accomplish that with the, the December 19th as their next board meeting or possibly even sooner is, I would propose, so.
Yeah, we can, we can take that.
No objection?
So it's, just to clarify, it's, it's an accepting of the work of the audit, not an approval of the audit.
Thank you.
So it's, it is a, a subtle difference, but.
Nope, wording matters, thank you, I'll read the action, accepting of the NIC financial audit. Assuming without objection, we shall table that for the next regular board meeting. Hearing no objection, moving on. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Tab four, the action of a post-detention academy student fee, Tracy Robnett.
Hello, Chair McKenzie and esteemed trustees and guests. Thank you for inviting, thank you for allowing us to come here and, uh, put this proposal in for the student fees. What I'm gonna do is basically briefly introduce what we're doing. And then also I want to introduce my partners that can answer questions more thoroughly, if you have any. So I am the Division Chair for the Current Technical Professional Programs here on campus. And we have worked together to start a post-detention academy that the law enforcement communities locally and statewide support. And so the reason why we're coming to you today is because this started in a conversation in later spring and through the summer and working through fall. And it was just approved in November. So now we have to look at student fees and that's why we're coming to you rather than coming to you last spring. Um, just to highlight a little bit, the program will be nine weeks. And it's 14 credits and the student fees will be, uh, covering the educational, items that they need like ammunition, taser cartridges, uh, gas, all the fun stuff. So the idea is that, uh, we actually, I, I wanted to make sure you, and I also introduced in our post, we post a program, we have two programs, the patrol and now the detention academy. So Lieutenant Heil is our new program coordinator for the post academy. And then Sergeant Wagar, oh, there he is. He is gonna be our detention academy instructor. So I wanted to make sure I brought them up as well, if you have any questions. The request is for $710 for the student fees for the detention academy. And so do you have any questions?
Only the detention versus the post?
Yes, the post patrol academy has their own student fees that is already there if people are attending the post academy for patrol.
And, and this is just, so it's a new program.
Yes.
And because it's a new program, charging student fees requires board approval. And so, um, that's, that's why they're coming now is because it requires board approval. And, uh, so just a couple of notes is that, um, when they went down and presented the detention academy proposal, they got unanimous approval to host it. So we're, I think, the only academy outside of Meridian to, to have that, uh, authority to host this program. So it's a huge resource for the community. And, and as she said, you know, this is for ammunition and gas and, and, you know, non-standard kind of, uh, student fee materials, but, um, very critical to, to, uh, their success. And, and, uh, the, the other thing I, I learned is that the, um, detention officers, you can, you only have to be 18. So students coming right out of high school can, can participate in the detention center program. And then, um, kind of go up once they're 21, they can go up to the patrol. So this is a great program for students that are coming out of high school as, and others. Um, and, and all they need is just the, the approval for the fees so they can cover the costs.
So do you have?
Mr. Chair. Trustee Banducci, if we may.
All right, here's a quick question for you guys. Okay, so if I'm thinking detention versus post, post means initial generally, so we're getting new people in, going through the training. Would these be stacked where you'd go through the post and then through the detention? So you'd be, have both qualifications and could go that way? Cause I know detention, we're pretty shorthand, at least here in Cooney County, maybe other places. Again, now Dr. Swain just mentioned one's 18, one's 21, so that kind of puts it in reverse order potentially. Or would a detention program be more for experienced officers that wanna move into that versus, you know, being out on the street or detective or, or whatever they might be doing? How do we see the people filling into that?
So there, uh, the post academy is patrol officers and the detention academy is detention deputies that work in a jail. They go hand in hand, but you can, they can be different. You can choose one career path or the other. But with the detention academy, because to be a, a police officer, you have to be 21. So for the college, when we're going out recruiting, it's hard to recruit a high schooler to wait three years to then go to our, our, uh, patrol academy. So the detention academy kind of fills that gap and it gets the local students from all over the five northern counties. Cause detention academy is only, uh, for detention officers, detention deputies who work in the jails. The sheriff is responsible for the jail. So in the five northern county, there are five sheriffs that have jails. So all of them are shorthanded and they all have 18-year-olds that hopefully are, uh, ready and willing to step up and want to get their foot in the door for law enforcement. Uh, they just have three years before they can become a patrol officer. And a lot of them don't know about this and bringing this to the, the North Idaho into the college here. We'd be able to reach out to them and get them into the law enforcement career. And then if they choose to stay in the jail or then go down to, uh, or go back to a patrol academy later, they could.
Mr. Chair, when you're recruiting then, because the jails are shorthanded, are, are you guys able to offer some financial incentives or even pay for the course? Or is there some things there? Cause I'm thinking too, if a person goes through detention program, then in three years, if they've established themselves, as you said, and their troops somebody wants to keep, seems like they probably want to help pay for the post too. So feed each other both ways and are there, are there some financial incentives as part of the recruiting for this?
There, there is for just financial aid, um, that anybody can get. But this is also open to, uh, the, the sheriff's office. They, when they hire somebody, they have to get them certified. Instead of sending them down to Meridian, we can keep them local here and teach them the skill here. So if they're a self-sponsor that's just a student putting themselves through the program, there's financial aid. But the agencies, if they have somebody hired, then the agency would be paying for the, the, the schooling. But either way, we need the, the ammunition, we need the gas for the, the cars, regardless of where the student's coming from.
I was just thinking, the, the funding's there, it's easier to recruit.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's what we've been talking about.
We did meet about that, we have, uh, we're collaborating that we're gonna actually reach out, reach out to many funding sources and, uh, make sure that they do apply for financial aid. And I think, cause it actually has exploded a little bit as far as our detention academy and patrol academy. Because of the need of Meridian not providing some courses down there. So, um, so we are working hard to make sure that there are multiple ways. And also we're working with the foundation to where if, uh, an agency can send some, you know, send a student, but maybe not spend all the funding there, maybe we can kind of offset it. So we're working on, definitely having that conversation. And I did want to highlight that, um, I think there's 22 students now. Their possibility for spring detention academy at one point, or I don't know if it's gone up yet.
Yeah, the numbers are, are fluid, but, uh, for those who don't know, the post academy down in Meridian is, is ran by the state police and they canceled their spring classes. So now, um, from the time you hire a detention officer or patrol officer, you have a year to get them certified, which means you gotta get them through an academy and through a field training program. So now the people that are planning on sending their folks down there are scrambling to find somewhere to send them. And we're hoping to bring them in with open arms, uh, and find different funding sources to get them. So with that, the numbers for what we're having, uh, for this academy in, in January are very fluid. Uh, but we have the potential of being quite full for both patrol and detention academies.
Mr. Chair, two questions on both sides. What's the, what's the minimum number you need to be able to successfully run the course? And what would be your maximum occupancy for these courses?
For minimum, we have, uh, I believe it's a, a post requirement. We have to have six people in the class, uh, to hold a, an academy. And then the maximum number just for, because of facilities, we have is 24 for both academies.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fellow trustees, any other questions? I have some, if none. Okay. So for the community, there's tuition, which is actually capped by the legislature. And I understand NIC's tuition is at the max that it is. And then there's two categories that students pay, there's tuition and then there's fees. And, and fees, uh, can take various forms. So this would be one form specific to the class and some labs have more fees as well. Everyone's up to speed on this. I would just encourage and I don't even like a response of, um, inquiring to the foundation for preference, uh, for classes that have larger fees. Just to reduce the barrier and keep that, um, all subject pursuits within people's dreams. So, uh, I would just like to hear the foundation's response personally as a board member, either at a future board topic or individually, however. But I'm content with the topic, is any other last chance? Okay. Putting their requests, actions, so the post detentions academy student fee increase. All those in the affirmative, say aye.
Do we need a motion first?
Oh.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
To approve.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Trustee Corkle has a second, thank you. And discussion, I think we're content. Putting it to a vote, all those in the affirmative of the motion to increase the student fees.
No, no, to establish.
Establish.
Establish the student fees, thank you. Say aye.
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 That would be unanimous board agreement. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Excited for the new program.
Appreciate it.
So action, legal counsel services and clarification. So clarification is kind of hard when the other party is not present to explain themselves. So I, um, yeah, do we motion to accept resignation or how, how do we?
So the board would need to move to accept his resignation. And then we are prepared, we have an RFP ready to go because it's over $10,000. We have an RFP ready to go to, um, to launch. As soon as you've approved it, we'll do an RFP and get a, um, solicit bids for responses for new legal services.
Mr. Mr. Chair.
Trustee Banducci. Do you want to accept the resignation and then have a conversation or?
Yeah, we can certainly accept the resignation and then I would like to move, uh, to the resolution.
Okay.
We can do it under either one. What I have can fall under the next action item, the continuous professional service contracts. Or more appropriately, I have a space for, for a resolution.
Uh, I guess I would just like to say, when it comes to legal counsel, I would just like to relay my experience because I think it's important for the community to be aware of this. I didn't really plan these remarks and I, I didn't really write them down before. But I think it's important that the community knows, um, that this is, if it's happening at the highest levels at NIC to board members, I can only imagine to non-board members maybe experiencing a similar experience. And from my experience, and I can show anyone, uh, written emails to prove what I'm saying is absolutely true. But when we were, when Chair Banducci at the time was chair of this board and I was vice chair of this board, uh, attorney Lyons would not offer attorney-client privilege. And he shouldn't have because it was a communal representation amongst all the board members. The attorney works for all five of the boards and at times the president, of course. And, um, well, when I was no longer vice chair and essentially my vote didn't matter as fellow appointed trustees made clear to communicate. Then attorney-client privilege was invoked by attorney Lyons, still in the exact same communal representation. And to the point to where I was completely denied my information requests. And Lyons even saying, I don't work for you, Greg. Which is true, he works for all of us to, however, he wants to justify that. I was hoping for a clarification, but he's not here. So I accept, I see, I, do we have a motion?
I would like, I would like to, uh, move to the resolution. The resolution will actually, um, address this issue, this also.
You, you have prepared a res?
I have, I have three documents that I will share with the other board members at this time for your review and then, uh, for your vote.
Okay.
So for open meeting laws, the, the governor's office actually called and said, if there's a resolution, it has to be part of the board packet before we can move on it. So since these were not part of the board. Uh, well, that's, they, they were, they were part of the, uh, executive session.
No, we never had an executive session.
Right, but you do, you voted not to have an executive session, so.
To us until we started the meeting, I am giving to you during the meeting, just as.
If you want to say something, please.
I, I'd just say like the.
No, no. If you want to say something, then please accept a request to be recognized. And say Chair McKenzie, I would like.
Chair McKenzie, I would like to.
You have the floor, sir. You have the force, sir.
So, um, that based on the input I received today from the governor's office. They said we would, um, risk being in violation of open meeting laws by not having these part of the packet for to meeting.
And when, when did you get this information, sir?
They called today, this afternoon.
This afternoon, at what time?
Um, I think at three o'clock. And and I said at the, at that time, I was, I was not aware of any written documents that were going to be presented.
What would you think a resolution would be, sir?
Well, it can be a discussion of the, of a resolution, but to actually present documents. I was not aware of that. I was not provided the documents, didn't know they existed.
Well, it's a lot less than a ninety eight page appraisal that was dropped on us or other appraisals.
Let's read it and see if anyone has any objections and we'll have a conversation and we'll see what goes on.
Find the timing quite.
Did the governor's office state any statutes or anything?
No, they just were concerned that it was not in compliance with open meeting laws.
Yeah, that's typical of them. Convenient.
So the, Mister Chair, I would, um, ask on point number four on page two of the resolution. That because this is a contract that will exceed ten thousand dollars. Um, it should go out for bid and on an RFP and not be awarded directly to, um, any, any, anyone. Um, any one individual prior to, uh, the RFP process.
Well, I challenge that because you're making an assumption, sir. The prior attorney was on a month to month for years and years and years on a contract signed in the dark of night by the former president and himself. Without any, uh, talking to the board chair, that happened to be me at the time. Or anything about the board and how we wanted our representation. There was no RFP. Uh, did not have current documentation from when he had changed firms. And it was on a month to month, same as these. These are at will contracts, so. They'd have to accrue up to ten, but they're not initially ten thousand in 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 value at all. That's not how they're designed. There's no commitment here for any particular number other than an ongoing on a per hour basis.
And I would say, as Chair, I can just speak to, um. That are, uh, going out attorney lines, uh, has clearly made it. Clear that it's the board's choice to who they want as legal counsel.
Yes, he has multiple, multiple occasions over the years.
Only when it's inconvenient, I'd say, um, seems that his opinions change. So this would be.
I, I, if I may, Chair.
President, you're recognized.
I do believe you are violating state law on contracting. Um, there was an RFP, I've seen the RFP that, um, Mr. Lyons approved. Uh, and I, I, I can't speak to how that was done in the past. But I, I can, I can say that there was a, an RFP and and he responded to that. Um, and I, I think that we are violating contracting laws, um, by contracting without an RFP. The services of any lawyer, um, so I, I, uh. Um, I, I believe that an RFP is necessary. Um, and for the services for the board, if if you want to, uh, approve. I, I think it's, it's not best practice if you want to prove, but I think for internal, um, NIC services. Um, we have to make sure that someone meets the qualifications, um, and and, um. Meets the, uh, RFP requirement for, uh, contract services, so.
You know, my research as a legal services and insurance actually do not require an RFP. And I've, uh, read through this and I feel comfortable, uh, with this resolution and I think. Uh, being without a lawyer as, uh, Mr. Lyons, um, quick actions after the election. Uh, does not put this board in a good position right now. And I would like a legal representation immediately. And I'm open to, uh, pursuing an RFP, just like we're doing with insurance. And it seems at the speed of the insurance, which is arbitrarily six months. Um, but if we want to do that sooner than later with both of them, I'm very open to that. But I think the ca- call of the board absolutely needs a legal representation immediately. And I feel, um, comfortable with this and I'm curious to see how, uh, the governor, uh. Reconciles his, the prior board's actions and resolutions and, um. Late minute document drops and only now has an, uh, uh, a problem. So that's very interesting. And I'm looking forward to whatever legal counsel this board has to doing research and engaging with the governor's office to actually produce citations on. Uh, pursuing up on the person contact that they have.
Mister Chair.
Trustee Banducci.
Perhaps the governor will intervene also in an appoint us an attorney, uh, anything's possible.
He's quite eager to be involved here. So. Any other thoughts?
Mister, Mister Chairman.
Um, trustee Corkle, you're right.
Yeah, um, being one of the new guys on the block here. Um, if if I understand you correctly, did you just say that you are willing to put out an RFP for legal counsel? But that you're interested in having an immediate counsel right now that may end up being temporary?
Yes.
Yes. And how soon could that RFP go out?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
You know, I'd say it goes out after the insurance change. When the insurance is supposed to come out for an RFP. If you notice, we've lost eye crimp.
Right.
For some reason, the RFP just hasn't gone out. And I've, um, been dismayed at the speed that it's progressed. So I would push it.
The, the RFP went out, um, and we only got one response.
Yeah, I know.
So the RP for insurance did go out and it, we got a response back. It took three months for the, for that process to work its way through. But the RP was produced and we did get a bit, uh, a response back. And that's what we're under now. We're being covered by the response from that RFP.
Well, I guess when we have our audit conversation, I would like to pursue past. Public comments, if you recall, the Redmond Insurance person. Um, I guess as a relay is a different experience to where I, I would like to understand more of that process. But no, I'd say for within at least three months, um. I'd be open to pursuing it then. So how's that?
No, I think, I think as a, as the president.
Uh, we're talking to trustee Corkle.
Well, um, yeah, we're kind of getting off the subject here, but, um. Um. I've never been on a board or anything that did not have legal counsel.
I would agree.
And, um, I stand for any advice as to whether there's a precedent set on that. Or if we could safely proceed without legal counsel at this point and put the RFP out.
Well, for ha- having temporarily.
President, Chair, trustee Banducci.
As it's been described, again, on many occasions by our former counsel, Mr. Lyons. The counsel for the board and and the colleges at the discretion of the board of trustees. I have given us a proposal here, a resolution to take care of the, to accept the resignation. To address the current vacancy, to put a competent attorney in place. To request the former counsel to provide the new attorney with the information that is needed in a timely manner to continue. Serving the college without interruption. I think we have, I think I have with these three documents. With the contract for the new attorney, covered all the bases and it will provide us with immediate. Legal counsel. We will not have a gap. And I think it's important for us to have continuous, ongoing legal counsel without a gap. So I would like to call the question and I would like us to vote on resolution twenty twenty two dash zero three.
The question has been called.
Mister Chairman, will there be any further time for discussion here?
Sir, I called the question.
You, you can speak, but make it quick.
I'm, I'll make it quick. I just, you know, personal note, I'm very uncomfortable, uh, voting on an attorney that I have no experience with. No knowledge of and, um, being put in this position under these circumstances is very, very uncomfortable.
No, thank you. Okay, for those in the affirmative of passing, uh, this resolution, which essentially, uh. Hires the law office of Arthur B. Mackimer, um, shall be hired immediately is the essential parts that I'll read. Um, and then it also dictates that the president shall take such actions as may be necessary in connection with that hiring. Including notification of third parties and college personnel as needed, uh, et cetera. Um, that's the resolution as written for those. Who desire its passage, say aye.
Aye.
Two ayes, uh, for those. Who vote in the negative, say nay.
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 The chair votes aye, the resolution passes. All right.
Mister Chair.
Trustee Banducci.
There's an additional resolution to be addressed, but before we address that resolution, I'd like us to deal with the incumbent paperwork. With the resolution that was just passed, we could have the appropriate people please sign and execute the document. So we may have a legal counsel for the remainder of our meeting. I think that would be appropriate. There are three documents for signature.
Is that, are you saying you want me to sign this and make it, uh, happen?
Well, actually, it's not just you.
The board clerk.
And I believe there's also a.
A fee agreement?
Yeah, I think that needs to be by the, uh, chair and the president. And Mister Mackenber.
I think that's wise.
Mister Mackenber, sir, if you had a approach. I don't have a spot for you right here.
Can somebody bring? I'm gonna need a signature from a board clerk. You, sir, right there. Yeah, with the president's signature. Yes, so there's these two W.
Greg has all the copies.
I, I don't want to sign this until after I check to make sure it's legal because I don't want to engage in a potentially illegal contract.
Okay.
I have no problem signing it if it's legal, but I, I will check, even if I have to pay my personal attorney to, to do that. Want to make sure it's legal before I sign. I don't want to be engaged in a illegal contract.
Sir, you are under the direction of the board.
Yeah, but, but you can't, you can't direct me to do an illegal act.
It's not an illegal act.
So.
I want to check with that. It can wait till tomorrow.
And, and who exactly are you going to check with?
I will check with my personal attorney.
I see.
I, just to cover our bases, if. Sir, sir, if, if you can get a microphone.
Microphone.
There is, um. In chapter two of title seventy four Idaho code, uh, section seventy four dash two oh four sub four. Speaks to agendas. Uh, at board meetings, uh, there is no requirement for resolutions to be attached. Uh, there is no case law on that. And I would like, um, I look forward to President Swain giving me the names of the people in the governor's office. Uh, actually, with regards to that chapter, it is the attorney general who enforces it. So, uh, the governor's office would probably refer you to the attorney general if you looked into it. Um, I have, I have never written an illegal contract. Uh, in probably hundreds of fee agreements I have had in Tootany County over the time, so. Um, I think if the board, uh, directs you to sign it, my advice would be sign it and let's move forward. Uh, certainly if it is illegal, uh, there would be, uh, a time for that to be done. Uh, but if, um, if the attorney is to move forward right away, then certainly I do need a contract. Thank you.
Do we have all the papers? Page one of three, two of three, three of three. Excellent. So we are ready to go with the signature. Uh, I don't want to pressure you to, to do that.
Yeah, I, I will, I will sign, uh, as, as soon as I have a chance. I, I mean, I have, I have no objection if it's, if it's a legal contract, I have no objection to it. It is your authority to do that as a board, but, um, I, I have a responsibility to the college to make sure that we're not doing something. That is not allowed. So, sh- once that's cleared, I have no problem signing it. That's fine.
Okay, I just feel maybe it may just be best to make a, a secondary motion as well to cover all of our bases. To direct, um, the appointment of attorney, uh, Mackenber as the board's legal representative. As an additional motion beyond the additional resolution we passed, so that he can take either. Because if, if you notice, the legal counsel services is action item on the agenda. And I, I can, um, don't need a lawyer to, um. Clarify to me that board motions, um, can act on agenda action motions to.
Mister Chair.
Trustee Banducci.
I make a motion. At pending. President Swain following the direct verbal order that he was given by this board of trustees and signing. The appropriate fee agreement, that in the interim, that. Mister Mackenber become the attorney of the board. Until such time he becomes the, the attorney for the entire college per the resolution.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, um.
So under discussion, Mister Chairman?
It is, welcome, you're recognized.
Um, thank you, um, so if I'm understanding this correctly, is it Mackenber or McComber?
McComber with a, with a U. Think of it, it's spelt with an O, but it sounds with a U.
Um. He, he would be hired on a temporary basis until this whole situation can be reviewed tomorrow. Is that correct? And if this is deemed to be an inappropriate act, that would nullify. Uh, Mister McComber's, uh, employment.
Mister Chair.
I believe the, the motion at hand would, the only nullification that would occur theoretically at a one percent chance, the way I see it. Is if the resolution would be nullified according to some governor's input. Who's not the attorney general's office. So, that's.
Okay, Mister Chair, for clarification, my motion is that Mister Mackenber will be the attorney for the board. Subsequent to those documents being flushed out. Then he may become the attorney for the college also. But my motion is that he is our attorney for the board. Regardless of what happens with those documents and the resolution. Is this yours too?
It is. You can keep that one. Wasn't planning to move.
Again, Mister Chairman, being the new guy on the block and operating under such short notice and with no references, no experience, no knowledge, I can't support this.
Acknowledged. And if I could respond, then maybe it would have helped to meet with Trustee Banducci before the meeting. Just an idea. I do believe you reached out and was rebuffed. I'm accurate.
Yeah, that's accurate. That's accurate.
Okay, that's good. Okay.
Chair McKenzie.
Yes, Trustee Zimmerman.
I have the same experience here this evening, having all of this new put in front of me. I'm not comfortable moving forward with a a yes vote on something of this nature. So I would need more time to review, and I as well have not ever had the pleasure of meeting Mister McComber. So I think that that might be an appropriate thing to do. I've never had an invitation to meet with anyone prior to this meeting.
Okay.
Mister Chair.
Trustee Banducci.
I call the question to vote on the motion to make Mister Mackamber the attorney for the board effective immediately.
The motion has been called. We shall take the vote. Those in the affirmative of appointing Attorney Mackamber for the attorney of the board effective immediately, say aye.
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 Those in the opposition, say nay.
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 And the chair votes aye. So the motion passes along with the resolution in front of it. Just to go hand in hand to cover all bases, welcome Attorney Mackamber to the team.
Thank you.
All right, and so that puts us legal, I believe we do jump.
Mister Chair. Mister Chair.
Trustee Banducci.
Sir, I have another resolution, please.
Oh, there we, okay, I see. Um, we did skip. Oh, I see why that's there. Okay, what is your second resolution, sir? If anyone wants to be recognized to speak on this, they're welcome to be recognized.
I will make the motion to pass Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero-four.
I second.
Chairman McKenzie.
Uh, Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes, I haven't had time to completely read this yet.
That's why we've, I made a motion, so if someone wanted to second it, we're.
It is. It is now up for discussion, Trustee Zimmerman. If you have input, edits, thoughts, we will not move forward until you have time to read it all. I myself just finished, so.
Mister Chairman.
Trustee Corkle.
Can I ask why this is considered necessary?
That is a good question.
Is he talking to you?
That's.
I'm talking to whoever can answer the question.
Believe you proposed the resolution, sir.
Well, actually, I think the recitals speak for themselves, but I I think we're at a position with the challenges that we have and the concerns we've had and and particularly with accreditation and and some of the truths and mistruths and facts and and misinformation and the the concerns and the how emotional a topic this has become that I think is a brand new board with three brand new members that we need to do a stop, a full stop. And we need to review where we're at. We need to review our budget. We need to review the hirings that we're doing. We need to review our structure. We need to review our roles and responsibilities and duties. I think we need to reestablish the relationship between the board and the President. If you'll notice my fourth whereas in particular, I think we need to have an understanding of of what our roles and responsibilities are and what authority we have and how that works with the college at large and with the President. I think that right now I don't want to see us moving forward and doing anything in in particular in this vein until we've got our feet under us and decide to make those decisions. There's a new new board, and so I I think we need to stop and move forward in the will of this board, not the will of the former appointed trustee board and picked by the governor and his minions. So we're going to start fresh and it's a it's a new era, new dawn here at NIC. As we have actually have five elected officials again up here as trustees. The public has spoke, and we will do our duty. We have, we have work to do. But we need to reset and start at the baseline.
Trustee Corkle, would you? Does that answer your question or?
Mister Chairman, that is an answer. But putting this in front of three new trustees on their first meeting is asking a lot. And I would ask our new attorney to validate this procedure.
Mister Chair, if I may. Trustee Corkle. This is true. You guys are new. It was amazing the lightning speed that the appointed trustees moved when they took over the majority of the board. You know, it's interesting. I've been accused of being the guy that controls everything and everybody votes my way. Michael Barnes did not always vote my way. He drove me crazy at times, crazy. Even when I thought he was going to vote one way, he didn't. I'll suggest to you that you will vote your own way. Trustee Zimmerman will vote her own way. Trustee McKenzie has certainly voted his own way over time. In fact, if anybody has adult children, Greg and I are twenty-four years apart. Sometimes Greg tells me what and and I feel like the dad being told. So trust me, Greg has his own opinions and is his own man. And so everybody will get the chance to look at it and evaluate it and have their own vote. And certainly, Trustee Wagoner is his own man. He's several years older than me and has been successful in his careers in both the military and the corporate world. So unlike the former board that never not voted in lockstep, our previous board did that. We were not always in lockstep at all. And again, I use Trustee Barnes as an example. There were many times where there were different votes between he and I and Trustee McKenzie. So I don't expect universal agreement on everything, and that's okay. But I think this is the proper course of action for this board at this time. And as soon as everybody's had a chance to read this, I call for the question.
I I have something.
Excuse me, Mister Mackamber is going to answer.
Mister Corkle.
Trustee Cork.
Trustee, yes, thank you. The the board could have made this on just simply a motion. And as long as it was on the agenda, it's proper to be done that way. But the fact that they've written it up and documented every approach to it is actually much more proper than if it was simply done on an oral 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 motion. And if you if you get down to the recitals, you get through the recitals, when you get down to to two, three, and four on the second page, there's actually two things going on. It looks like hiring for new and vacant positions in the president's cabinet are hereby suspended for a time to be determined by the board at a later date, allowing bullet number three to take place, which says that the hiring process for members of the president cabinet shall be immediately halted and frozen until the president can bring the potential new hires for that cabinet before the board at a special or regular meeting in executive session for confidential review of their qualifications to meet the needs of the NWCCU accreditation schedule and the business and academic needs of NIC. And then number four is simply that the president shall take other such actions as may be necessary and advisable. And so the 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 motion itself could have been very short and straightforward, but the fact that the trustees have documented it in this way actually gives, this, this is your resolution, Todd, so I guess you're you're the guy on the hook for writing this, and so it works. In my view, I think it's fine. I don't think there's any problem with it. What it does depend on, though, is President Swain immediately setting up people that he has. We heard earlier that there were three people in competition for one more open position, I believe it was, and Ms. Garcia has been appointed. She's in place. So so that's done. And the new, is it a provost or some dean, I think, for for the provost? So that would be pending, and President Swain could simply have a a meeting, bring those people before, have an executive session, and and that would satisfy it. So I also see it as very simple for the board.
I I would just like to say that if you read Idaho statutes and the responsibilities of the Board of Trustees that I familiarize myself with, and if you also read not, not, I don't mean to point to your contract, but if when I first got hired on the the, at the time, his president's contract and delegated responsibilities, and and then if you also read NIC policy manuals, which I encourage everyone to read, they're not the most exciting, but they're very important. And a lot of the board as delegated and rubber stamp authority has been has been the theme for the past, well, twelve years. And ever since I got elected, I have reiterated that theme of my disappointment and disagreement with prior boards, which is why I got elected to change that. And this is definitely bringing in forcing NIC policies to comply with state statutes and allowing the board to have, well, just not be a rubber stamp board. And I I I think I see where you're headed with this, Trustee Banducci, and I personally support it. So do you have a motion and a second yet, or is this presented to us?
We had a motion. We had a second.
That we did, and this is discussion.
Answered.
I believe we're ready for the question. So, all those.
It will be provided, Chair.
It will be public record. Yes, absolutely. I think, how about, would it satisfy if we update the board agenda packet with these resolutions that were passed?
We we can, we can add them retroactively.
Yes. Was that good enough? We all want to go home tonight. So yes, we're gonna call the question. And those in the affirmative of passing this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those in the affirmative, or negative, who say nay.
Nay.
I hear one nay.
Nay.
Two and two. The chair votes aye to pass the resolution. Can the board clerk come forward to provide signatures at the end of the meeting? I guess, I think we have one more. Did I hear correctly? Did you say three or are you finished, sir?
I am done, sir.
Okay, so I see one, two resolutions. Am I correct in that?
Yes, sir, you have a initial resolution that had two other documents accompanying it, and then a second resolution. So Resolution two zero two two dash zero three with two accompanying documents and Resolution two zero two two dash zero four. That was a standalone resolution.
May I have the board clerk come forward to at least attest? Say again? I I would like a signature right there. Attest by the board. Yes, clerk of the board.
Yeah, we can do that for me, right?
I would like it right now. I have two resolutions that I'd like signed, along with a contract, though I'm willing to respect the contract. Where's the second resolution?
Thank you.
That's just just for your records. Okay, there is this one. If you would sign this one first, this is okay. That one's, no, 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 this is not for the present. This is.
I know that.
That's the fee agreement that she's referring to.
Okay, we're just looking for an attestation, that somebody's to witness. All right. Do we have any other business under? So I believe that covered trustee's path to a resolution, Policy seven oh four was part of the resolutions and, which I didn't even have to cover. You saved me that headache. Any more resolutions that any new trustees want to put forward? Okay, I guess we have enough action for tonight. Amen previous minutes. That actually is me. So I'll start this conversation, and anyone's welcome to chime in. The prior board, appointed board is what I call them, definitely disregarded a public comment input, I believe it was a a public comment. Hannah, help me. It's okay. But one of the members spent his time to come down to our board meeting and read through our minutes and provided his opinion that our board minutes were insufficient, and he wanted certain important facts that might have been well, overlooked, intentionally overlooked by the appointed board members because it's kind of inconvenient for one of their friends, it seemed like. And and so I would just like those previous minutes amended to respect the community who spent their time to show up. And and so I would like, I I have a motion that actually kind of prepped by. So I also feel is wrong, yeah, the previous board members completely disregarded a concerned citizens' input to the minutes as they were being approved. So before they went approved, he provided his inputs and was completely disregarded. So I think it's still appropriate, even though these minutes have been approved to to amend them because it's important. I think it would be a good demonstration of this current board listening to the people who we work for and reaching out to Mister Hartman and allow input to the minute. So Mister Hartman spent the time to come to our board meeting. So therefore, I motion for the board secretary to reach out to myself and Mister Hartman. I would like the three of us to meet and work with both of us to propose a correction to the minutes. And I would appreciate the second to my motion.
I'll second the motion.
The trustee Wagoner seconds the motions. I appreciate that.
Under discussion, Mister Chairman?
It is. Welcome.
What kind of amendments are you proposing?
So I I don't have an actual agenda difference. So I, I don't have an actual agenda difference right here with the wordings, but the, the, Mr. Hartman's minutes had critical facts, such as rent payments that was approved by this board, and comparisons of the estimates and facts that the, the appraisal wasn't even given to board members before the meeting, though now all of a sudden we spin around, and that's a big deal by the governor's office, and.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Rather than amending the minutes, why don't you ask Mr. Hartman to present his statement in writing, and then it can be made just part of the record?
It was part of the record, but I've noticed, and this is actually one of the things I've, topics I plan to bring up on future. I would like our board meetings transcribed to assist people who do speak in public comments to be part of the record and to be able to disseminate to the community for those who are not here and don't have the time necessarily to watch a whole board meeting. Personally, myself, I read things a lot faster. So it's important to me to have it as part of the minutes. Because right now, the minutes are the, the leading fact that people go to when they go to reference prior board meetings. And to have it read into the public record, it was read in the public record then, in public comments, but, and even he could read it again now, but I still think that's insufficient when people are going in the past and looking at the board business. I would like it part of the minute, so that's why, hopefully that answers your question. Any other?
May, may I make a comment, chair?
President.
The, the transcription is extremely time consuming. So the, the Zoom recording does an automatic transcription that is pretty good. And we can pull that out and make that an addendum to the minutes as opposed to actually going through and having someone transcribe them word for word. It, it's a, it's a pretty, when you can compare that, it reads pretty well. Compare that to the, to what's on Zoom if you, if you want to, but that's, that's a, I, I would think is an, it meets your, your desires and, and is an automated process as opposed to long amount of time for somebody to go through and manually transcribe.
Mr. Chair.
Actually, if I, if I may, I'm gonna respond to that. Actually, sir, I have looked over those transcriptions and personally, I would appreciate a human's time spent in it to, to certify that a human in the loop has made these are accurate. And I remember during my time as a board member, there was a American Sign Language professor who was dearly loved by this community. And it definitely showed in the students' protests at the non-renewal of her contract. And when I was speaking to other American Sign Language members who, who are deaf or hard of hearing, and I was speaking to them and encouraging them to come speak to the board and come be aware of the board's happenings. And they, the first question they asked is, do you have an American Sign Language interpreter at your board meetings? No, are they transcribed? No. And the people like, obviously, we, we can't connect. So it was very hard for me to reach out to that community. So it's more than, it, it is more than me that I think of when I make these requests. Trustee Banducci.
Well, first question may be a moot point now, but I, I was second question, but, President Swain, and maybe Greg, you're more, excuse me, Trustee McKenzie may be more familiar. When you were looking at the, I don't know if you had a chance to look at the transcriptions or not because of the Zoom, would you, would you guess, or do they give an estimate of their accuracy, like 80%, 90%? Do we have an idea how good those are?
It is, it is accurate, but it also doesn't have who said what. It just kind of has words. It would be nice to have names to what people say. It, it could just be done better. So I would at least like to see proposals, we don't necessarily have to do it. We're not gonna make a board whim decision tonight. Maybe we could solicit some RFPs from the community. I do know some community members are already doing this at will, and maybe we could spread their work. So is just a desire of one board member is all it is, and hopefully that can be respected enough.
The, so if, if I may, the, the, if, if folks are speaking clearly into the microphone and there's not a lot of background noise, it, it's 90% accurate. As, as Trustee McKenzie noted, it is not, it doesn't identify who is speaking. It does identify different voices, speaker one, speaker two, kind of thing, so.
Let's do that. But
Thank you.
From somebody who uses it and tries to reference prior board meetings, it makes it very time consuming to quote people at their board meetings. Moving on, I'm sorry, I got too into the depths. We are discussing, I believe, amending previous minutes. And I had a motion, there was a second, and that was for the board clerk to meet with myself and Ron Hartman, if he's willing, to propose a wording to the agenda minutes. So this will be coming again to the board minutes. So I am calling the question, unless anyone objects.
One clarification.
Trustee Banducci.
Maybe this goes back to Trustee Corkell's question or discussion. So there would be the meeting, and then it would come back to us for our review for a vote.
Absolutely.
Conclusion.
Absolutely.
Minutes, okay.
Absolutely, and you'll see red changes, and I think it'll only be additions.
Okay, thank you.
So, call the questions, those in affirmative, supporting the motion.
I have a copy of the transcript from that meeting here that we pulled because it was on the agenda item. So there's, may prevent you from needing to meet.
All right, well, maybe you can give that to the board clerk to propose. Maybe it can even be done through email then. Excellent, thank you. So calling the question, those in affirmative, supporting my motion to propose an amendment, working with the board clerk and myself and Ron Hartman, say aye.
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 Those in the opposition, say nay.
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 That's two nays, the board chair votes aye, so the motion passes. Looking forward to meeting. Okay. Discuss upcoming agenda items, President Swain.
Well, the, probably the most important one, I guess, will be to figure out how, under, under this resolution, we hired folks because we spent a good bit of money bringing folks onto campus this week for hiring. And so at, at, by the end of the week, we expect to have selected the finalist for that provost VP for Student Services. And so I, I guess, I, I'm not sure how that's gonna work under the, under this resolution or, or whatnot, but, and is it, is it sufficient to submit that individual's credentials for board members' review? Because that is the one remaining position that needs to be filled to meet the requirements of NWCCU accreditation. So, so that is the, hiring that one person is the, is the, aside from board conduct, is the final step that we need to take, so.
And looking forward to filling that position at the board lifts.
Since I did the resolution, I, I think I'll answer that for the moment. I think we're gonna take a pause for the moment. And quite frankly, I think the prior board of appointees demonstrated that cost is not an issue. I mean, apparently it's not, because they spent money hand over fist, and the contracts that they did right, and the things they did. And then people that claimed to be fiduciaries were approving things like moving allowances with no cap. It could be anything. And we put a housing allowance, but we're actually paying more for rent. We, we, we had reset down to 180,000, and now we're back up more than we were with the prior president. So there's a lot of things that have been done, and other hiring, no offense to our new VP over there, but we just, we had reset to 150 for the provost, 180 for the president, and we're trying to keep a handle, and now I'm at 160,000 for a VP. So apparently, we've got lots of money, and we're just gonna pay, and we're raising the rates, and the prices are going up, and the contracts are going up. So we spent a few dollars here or there, you know, I, I guess we'll have to work with that. You know, the way some of these processes went, the way people were rushed onto campus in the presidential search, the money we spent because of tickets that were bought like the day before, two days before. There was so much stuff that was turned because that board had a timeline of this long, and they had their agenda to do after they got in place. And so we watched that traction for, you know, that six months, and, okay, well, I guess the example has been set. So we're gonna pause for the moment, and if there's a little bit of cost to trying to take our time and, and do what this board thinks is right, I think Dr. Wold's right there, he often said, I'm doing what I think is right. I think I'm doing what I think is right. Well, I'm doing what I think is right, and I think this is the appropriate resolution at this time. And I think this is the appropriate action for this board. I think we're going to pause that hiring at this time, and we will discuss how we move forward.
That is one agenda item, and I'm sure we'll work together to get it on the topics, board agendas in the future. Is there any other trustees that would like to propose an agenda item? I, I have several, but I give Trustee Banducci.
The public can't be involved, I'll share this, this was on our emails today, or, or excuse me, came in yesterday, Sunday, I just saw it today. And I think this is a, an item that is a timely topic. I don't know if you folks have checked, can't check your email, but we've got some folks that have been quite concerned about some security. And have made a number of requests for information, have been trying to track on this. This is one of the gentlemen that have belly buttoned that, and I think he deserves some answers. And I think we need to address some shortcomings, and I don't know that we've been quite forthright and accurate in the things that we've said in response to the requests and the questions and the discussion on this topic in our meetings and, and otherwise. So I bring it to you that we have a conversation about our campus security.
And Trustee Banducci, Mr. McKenzie upon.
President, your records.
The, the, what he is requesting is, is information that should not be released to the public. It is, it is information that is confidential about our inner workings of our security. And so he's acting, he's asking for redacted information, unredacted information, that the reason why it has been redacted is we, we don't want the public, certainly the news media, any news media, to know how we do things, what we do. And so th, this is number one. This is, I mean, so the information he's asking for, he has been provided, he has been honestly provided this information. And, and so asking for unredacted information being, to be released to the news media, I think, puts us all at risk. And so I would strongly recommend not releasing all of our procedures to a, a news outlet of any, so, we, we don't release them to anybody. So I don't think that's, I don't, I don't think that's wise. And he, and, and I'd say, he does not have a right to know the inner workings of our security systems. And we shouldn't release it to him.
Is there any other comments from fellow trustees? I, before this email even arrived, which is today, 2:45, I, I actually have been in communication with a couple of people, and I actually am personally very interested in this topic. Now, I can fully respect your words you're saying, and I would say the two topics that I had that I wanted to propose here was the security conversation is just how I put it, and then this arrived.
I, I would be open to a closed session, if you wanted to do a closed session with just trustees.
What I have in my notes is, I was, I would, I'll just read my paragraph. I would like an update on two things that are dear to my heart. So one being the security conversation, and two, the IT hack. I would just like to know what, what happened there. And, but I believe both of these topics should be behind closed doors, and I am hoping my new fellow trustees would support an executive session to discuss these topics. We would need four votes, and I believe the topics for executive session at that topic, I was looking through them, I'm open to feedback, but in my mind, how I was justifying this, it would be personnel evaluation would, would be the only one suitable. Like, for example, assessing, evaluating the post, post-crisis actions of an IT hacker, however you want to justify it.
I'll get the right, right, as long as, as long as we're not violating, but I, I'm quite certain that security are things that we can, cybersecurity or physical security can be discussed in executive session.
So I, I agree, and I went hoping for a verbal confirmation from our fellow trustees, not a vote, but maybe importance to this topic to my dear heart, that we either formulate, if we're not going in an executive session to discuss this topic, that we're gonna formulate some open session topic to discuss it, that hopefully the president and, and us can, can come to some agreement on. Trustee Banducci.
May I ask a question of the President Swain?
Yes.
While I recognize certain things have to be kept confidential, as a fellow military man, you and I both understand that. So we have our classification levels. Sure, you probably carry the top secret too, so.
TSSCI.
Same as I.
With BI.
Yeah. I was in SCIF too, vault to vault. There are certain things I would think regarding security, though, that they have inquired about that could be open to public discussion. Things like the policy of arming our, our, our security guards, and what that would entail, and the cost and the training, the use of NARCAN. Are they equipped, if there was some
They are.
sort of a problem on campus? I mean, that was one of the questions, I wasn't sure if that had.
They regularly carry, you know.
They, they have, so that was an updated change where the, the, the chemical composition of NARCAN has changed, it is now stable. It is now part of their first aid training, so all of our officers now carry NARCAN.
As, oh, that must be a very recent, is that pretty recent?
Yeah, it was, and it was, the, the materials were provided by the Board of Health, so it's, it was no, came as no cost to us, so our, all of our security guards have that now.
Okay, so I think that was one of the topics, there had been a question about that because we were afraid of, of, there was a possible overdose, if we weren't able to respond quickly and, and act and correctly to that. You know, and again, even from a liability standpoint, much less just the loss of human life. And I think there was some discussion about the arming of our, of our security force. Is that something you would not deem to be publicly discussable? Or is that something you think needs to be behind? Or can we get some information on that, to look at that?
I'll leave it to you. Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think we, we've discussed some of that, and I, you know, despite the fact that whoever wrote this email identifies me as a liar, for, I mean, I, I've spoken to, probably the first conversation I had one upon getting on campus was to the security folks about this very question. And, and apparently, this guy thinks I'm a liar for that, for saying that. But it, it has been discussed, I've discussed it with our chief of security, and it is a point that has come up before the board, so I'm, I'm happy to bring it back up as a, as a topic. But, yeah, that, that, that is something that can be discussed in open session.
Through, through, this individual has been interested in, in several months. And through, through the months, he, he has indicated to me that other community colleges have provided information that, to himself, even knowing he's a reporter, that NIC has, has not. That would be it's, they made the mistake, we're not being transparent enough. It's, it's a fine balance, and I don't mean to judge anyone's decisions on that. But it, it is important, and I take the responsibility as the governing board of this college to look the community in the eye and say, hey, trust us with your kids, with your students, with your, with yourselves, and know that your presence on our campus is protected as, as much as a community college can do. So the, of the conversations I've had with this individual, that, when he says the full unredacted training manuals, the reason why he's asking for unredacted is because the redacted parts, to him, I don't mean to paraphrase his wording, but from what I understand is, the redacted parts would not paint a compliance picture of what NIC is currently with the Clear Act. So it is important for, at least for me, to ensure that all of our laws are followed, and especially reporting requirements, and, and that also we're in a security posture that is secure. So I, I, it is, we can either, fellow trustees, if we're willing to go into executive session to discuss it, discuss it, and then have a more open conversation, and then maybe we can tailor our questions to a, a approved, a pre-planned public comment conversation. Assuming that's not violating any open meeting laws, because I, it's a sensitive topic. To fellow new trustees, should we just go down the board? Trustee Banducci, would, would you support an executive session on this topic?
Yes, I would.
Trustee Wagner, would you support a session? I, I myself would suggest an executive. Trustee Wagner, would you support a session, I I myself would suggest an executive session on this topic, trustee Corkel. Yes, and trustee Zimmerman. Okay, so let the community know that there's five votes to discuss this topic, and at the next, hopefully, regular.
I would characterize it as consensus, because we didn't list it as an action item, but.
Forgive me, can, there is a consensus that to to discuss this at the next regular board session, hopefully. Or soon planned, alright, and I have actually three other bullet points, so that was. A security conversation, and hopefully the IT hack you can work in there. I'm sure. So I would also like, and I'm I'm willing to make a motion if if it needs to be, for the board training options and suggestions for the new board over the next year. So.
So you're you're talking the new trustee onboarding and the board and board training, you're discussing both those agenda items?
So, actually, no, this is, this is separate, so the new trustee onboarding, I was hoping to actually just. Have a conversation with us fellow trustees of what type of onboarding we want and information and and how we just see see that going. And discussion amongst all of us, but this is similar to the ACCT training that we did with the that. With the trustee and former president, I I found that crucial and super informative, and. I'd will be willing to do with ACCT, or I'm very excited about AGB, I I see that we have a new membership there, and and it may be both options and schedules and timings. But sooner the better.
Yeah, I've reached out with AGB and one of the, so onboarding, I was. It was a, it was a technical error, but trustee Wagner's. Cell phone, and we did, we didn't have a phone number for him, so we were not able to call, I was trying to get everybody in before Thanksgiving break. To to get the board policies and the documents, I was able to reach. Trustee Corkel and trustee Zimmerman, but we we're scheduled, I think, for Thursday morning to go through.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that, we'll have to.
So I, so to go through and give them all the board policies and.
Separate agenda item, we'll we'll get there, but this this is for.
For the training.
Like an all-day training, we get to be real good friends, and we hear experience from a former trustee, former president. Hear their perspectives, learn how to.
AGB is well, is willing to do that, and we'll start as soon as possible.
So can can. Options be presented to this board and and this board sign up for it?
What they, what they recommended, I I had an hour and a half meeting with them. Prior to today, and they laid out, and they wanted to do an interview with each of the board members, and then based on that interview. Set up training, and so that we can set that up as soon as possible.
So, so that's exactly the type of training I want, and I'm I'm actually very supportive of doing it with AGB, but. I I would like options of, we could do it with AGB, here's option A, we could do it, this is what it would look like, option B would be like ACCT.
I think they're all pretty much the same.
They they are, but it would just nice to see options, it it is the board who would be attending that, trustee Banducci.
May I make one request, whatever we do is we move forward with this, can we not initiate it till after the first of the year? Just because of the holidays and the timing, and for those of us that have businesses, I'm still in open enrollment, and I'm up to my eyes. And I'm through Medicare and then the rest of it to the middle of the month and to the end.
Fully agree, that that's why I'm hoping for options to come before the board, to to have us all discuss right then and there. What's best for each five of us, board trustees and president.
Yeah, so we were part of the, part of the mid-cycle review packet that we will send up to NWCCU is due on the fourth of March. And having this training completed, we were expecting, you know, January, February to do the training, so that it can be. The the results of that could be in that packet going forward, so.
I'm loving it.
January, February is kind of the timeframe that we were looking at anyway, so.
I think we're all in agreement, I heard after January first, I'm mid-February would work great. Actually, before mid-February would work great for me, but then again, options coming to the boards and AGB and ACCT. And whatever options you you deem best, but it would, I would like it to be the board's decision. For the ACT, for for the just general trustee training session. I think we have agreement on that, so we have a board clerks hopefully writing an agenda item for the next one, the board. But give me a second, if anyone has an agenda item, but we're almost out of here, everyone, so stand, stay strong. Where are we with the public's calendar schedule to get these professional services bids out in the open?
I have, they're all. These are, here's a list of all of our scheduled.
I got internet right now, is this on the internet for people?
The the ones that are highlighted in yellow are the ones that are going out to bid, the others are existing contracts.
So, this board, my recollection has requested basically a calendar to say, hey. In five years, the insurance thing is going to go out to bid in January, or whatever the date would be. But basically have an upcoming calendar, instead of a current, this is going. It would be nice to have a calendar of this is when RFPs will be going out again, and that make it publicly accessible. Equal opportunity for all is the goal, so I would like an agenda item to make that happen.
Well, I don't think we need an agenda, we can make the calendar item and post it and then share it with you.
Post it, share it, however this board gets, I I would like the community to know that it's that it's there, I would like to talk about it as a board. And see it, and just have a board agenda item, so, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Banducci.
Are you getting close to completing this? Because I have one thing I would like to address.
Yes, please, sir.
It's a bit of a reversion. But as I'm sitting here thinking about things. Because we're kind of halfway and in between, and we kind of did something kind of interesting here, my resolution. And then we kind of split some. Split some things, if there is an RFP that is to be drafted regarding legal counsel, so I'm I'm going to revert back to action. Under legal counsel services class clarification, since we passed that and did not actually act on that action item, I would like the RFP. Forwarded to the new board attorney for review. So, if there's an RFP that's generated, I would like to forward it to the new board attorney for review.
If, in my hearing, that will happen, or should we make a motion?
I don't, you know, you don't need a motion.
Alright, that will happen, that's what I understand, thank you, alright, and I am done with my bullet points of this topic, we shall move to the next. Agenda item, if no other trustees have upcoming topics, okay. New trustee onboarding, it sounds like. We're well on our way.
Yeah, we're, we'll have, by the end of this week, we should have that, the onboarding done.
Okay, and I I was hoping to be included in that, at least I've communicated that request since July, when we, or June, when we were talking about this, so. Maybe either I can join trustee Wagner's session, or during that onboarding, when we do the audit review this week, we can connect. Okay, trustee onboarding, that sounds like it was done for training, that we did that agenda topics, is there? I don't think anyone else has anything, change date of December nineteenth board meeting, so the nineteenth does not work for me. I would like to change the date, does anyone have any dates that they propose that would work for them? There is the nineteenth is a Monday, I could do, I actually. It's it's silly, but with the Christmas season. The seventeenth?
Seventeenth is a Saturday.
Would would the nineteenth?
Mister. Mister Chair.
Trustee Banducci.
Why not? Why don't we move it up a week, maybe we could look at the, at the twelfth possibly? Time early that week, or. How much time?
I got bad news, I mean, that that date you just mentioned doesn't work for me either, you know. I I'm hoping we either go for the ninth or the tenth, which is silly, just a couple of days away from now, but it would. Get done as all for the Christmas season, or we either go the sixteenth or seventeenth, or stick with the nineteenth.
Mister Chairman, the ninth does not work for me, the sixteenth does.
I can do the sixteenth.
I'm good for the sixteenth.
I have a lot on my plate, but it's not that structured, so I can conform to what you folks want.
There is the option of Zoom if it is travel, and if it leaves me to be Zoom as well, we can do that, we can.
I have a, I have a conflict on the sixteenth, sorry to say.
Just clerk.
Mister Chair, this may defeat your purpose for moving it off the nineteen, I'm not sure, what about the twenty-first? That it would be the regular Wednesday that we would have held it. When I made the board schedule back last spring, I made it the nineteenth because the state Board of Education. Which the president and some of the administrators always attend was on the twenty-first. We have since found out that the meeting is now taking place on Zoom in the morning, it doesn't impact that evening, so just a thought. For the twenty-first, that would be your right, that's when it would regularly regularly have been scheduled anyway.
I guess I can. I'll talk to the family, but either zoom in on the nineteenth, we can keep it, or twenty-first, or. Honestly, I'd go, I'd go the the tenth, sixteenth, or seventeenth. Tenth is a Saturday, I'd be willing to show up there, I'm not getting paid either way.
Mister Chairman, I'll be gone on the tenth, I'll be gone seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven.
Would you be willing to zoom in?
I doubt it, I doubt I could.
Seven, eighth, ninth, and tenth? Morning of the eleventh, or noon, no?
We'll be coming back on Sunday.
It's a bit of a stretch. How about the sixteenth or seventeenth, anyone do that?
Mister Banducci said he could not do the sixteenth.
Yeah, but he, sixteen or seven would be a good day. Really?
Sixteenth, huh? Not that I'm supposed to be somewhere right at six P M.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't break my heart if you couldn't make it.
You know what, that meeting shouldn't be that long, right?
If, we have several of the board reports that were, that I had scheduled for tonight, that we were rescheduling for that night. So it'll be just about an hour and a half of reports that I'd like to get out.
Well.
So we could be done by seven thirty?
I think we just keep it on the nineteenth then. Or either, the way I look at it, seventeenth, nineteenth, or twenty-first. It's inconvenient, no matter what.
Seventeenth is Saturday.
I know.
Just keep it.
Just keep it the nineteenth, alright, forgive me for consuming our time on the topic. Any remarks for the good of the order? Alright, I'll take the liberty before adjourned to remind everyone, it's night at the library. What's the correct term, this Wednesday night, tell me out with the terminal, I want to get the night at the library, and it's where the finals is coming up. And so everyone is studying and cramming, and if you haven't experienced it, I hear it is. An atmosphere of energy and young enthusiasm to be a part of, so a lot of. Drama has happened this past couple of years, and I think the community seeing the benefits that NIC provides to the community, and. One of those is just, NIC's night at the library, would help just remind everyone why this board's here, why this college is here. And the good things that NIC is doing, so have a good day, everyone, and this meeting is adjourned.